Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board. Today is Monday, January 7th, 2019, and the time is 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with the NJSA 10 colon 4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We will start with correspondence. We have a letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 4th, 2019, reappointing Jennifer Vealy as a Class 2 member of the planning board for a term end in December 31st, 2019. Letter from Mayor Soriano dated January 4th, 2019, appointing Dominic Mealy as alternate number one of the planning board for a term end in December 31st, 2020. Memo from the clerk dated January 4th, 2019, confirming the council appointment of Michael DiPiero as a Class 3 member of the planning board for a term end in December 31st, 2019. We'll now have the swearing in of the board members by Scott Carlson.
I will do these one at a time. Councilman, you first, please. Raise your right hand.
I'm Michael DiPiero.
I'm Michael DiPiero.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially and justly.
That I will impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of.
Perform all the duties of.
The office of planning board member Class 3.
The office of planning board member Class 3.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome back, gentlemen. Vealy?
Welcome back, Michael.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, you too.
I'm Jennifer Vealy. I'll raise your right hand.
I, Jennifer Vealy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially and justly.
That I will impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of.
Perform all the duties of.
The office of planning board member Class 2.
The office of planning board Class 2.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Raise your right hand, please.
I, Dominic Mealy.
I, Dominic Mealy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially and justly.
That I will impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of planning board member alternate number one.
Of planning board member alternate number one.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
Township of Parsippany Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome back, Mr. Mealy.
Thank you.
I will now open nominations for chairman.
It is my great pleasure to nominate Bob Keller to be chairman of this board.
Seconded.
Are there any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Seconded.
You can say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chairman takes over.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence you've placed in me that I didn't mess up too badly last year, that you're welcoming me back, so happy, happy new year to everyone. I'll entertain nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Thomas Dinsmore for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second, Aparowick.
Mr. Aparowick seconds. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll move nominations be closed then. Those in favor of Mr. Dinsmore as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Welcome back, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
If you want motion reaffirming.
I'm sorry?
You don't want motion reaffirming the planning board?
Yes, yes, we do. I'll entertain a motion to reaffirm the highly qualified, highly qualified, on camera, see, it must be up.
Move we reaffirm Planning Board Secretary Nora Jolie.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mealy, seconds. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those opposed, say no. Welcome back, Nora.
Thank you.
Great job you did. Appointment of Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee. Vice chairman, Mr. Dinsmore, will be the chairman of the Minor Site Plan Committee.
I would be happy to do that again. Thank you.
Okay, and members, Ms. Hernandez, Mr. Mealy, Mr. Aparowick, and who am I forgetting, Nora?
Uh.
Who was?
I think last year, did you?
Yeah, I did. I don't have to do it again.
Okay.
But I think, I think the missing piece would be, you know.
If there's anybody else.
We'd be happy to have you again.
If anyone else would like it, otherwise I'll do it again, but.
Or, or John Van Aken.
John, I mentioned you, didn't I?
No.
John, yes, John.
Okay.
John Van Aken.
Happy to do it.
That's a full five. Yay. We functioned with four for much of last year. Planning Board Professionals. We have Susan Vavate as planning board planner, Andrew Congiano as engineer, and Keller Kirkpatrick, and Scott Carlson, attorney. Are there any objections to reappointing those?
Does it just to get a motion? You can do all three at the same time.
Okay.
Move we reappoint?
Well, I wanted to see if there are any objections first. Now I'll entertain a motion to appoint, reappoint.
Self vote.
Second, Dinsmore.
Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We're reorganized for 2019. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn to the reorganization meeting?
So move, Dinsmore.
Motion by Mr. Dinsmore to adjourn the reorganization meeting. Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Aparowick, seconds.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, the regular meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board. It's Monday, January 7th, and it's 7:41 PM. Please call the roll.
Mr. Aparowick?
Present.
Councilman DiPiero?
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Mr. Pregieri?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mendel?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Ms. Vealy?
Here.
Mr. Van Aken?
Here.
Chairman Kettler?
Here.
Fudge of allegiance. Also present?
Pardon me. Also present, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Vavate.
Here.
And Mr. Holloway.
Here.
Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Ask you to please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open the meeting to the general public for anything that's not on the agenda for this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. If there are no objections, I'm going to flip-flop the agenda and have Craftsman Farms come forward first for their courtesy review. Doing this because I think that their application is going to be much shorter than RD, so we can, we can get you home in time for Monday Night Football if there was one. My season's over, the Steelers are gone.
There's a rather important college game on tonight.
Oh, yeah, well.
Clemson, Alabama.
Ooh.
Championship.
Motion to postpone until tomorrow.
The football game?
You can stand, you're just gonna want to use one of them, speaking to one of the
mics to record it first.
Just a suggestion, but if you put the drawing over where the slide is, Nora can flip that camera so the, since it's video recorded.
I'm not sure how to flip the camera.
There's just a little button you push down there.
I'm not sure which little button it is.
You're the control room.
All right, it was just a thought. You don't have to do it.
I guess.
But now it's a challenge.
What if maybe that's it all in there?
I'll be standing for most of this. These two guys, I think, will sit down. My name is Eric Holtermann from HMR Architects in Princeton, New Jersey. We've been here in Parsippany before. I don't know if we've spoken in front of this board, but we've done some other historic projects in Parsippany Hills, Parsippany Troy Hills, Bowlsby, DeGalecki House, Baldwin House, Mount Tabor, and Craftsman Farms. We've been doing architectural work at Craftsman Farms for a couple of decades, actually. My name is Eric Holtermann. I'm a principal of the firm. Kurt Leisure is the project manager, and Vonda Givens, I think you probably already know, executive director of the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms. We're here today for a courtesy review of a new administration building. The building is existing. It's a reconstruction, a historic reconstruction. The building was built in the Stickley era for use as a garage and storage building. It burned. The upper levels were rebuilt in a more modern fashion in the 1950s, I think. The historic stone foundation remained. Based on historic photos and other information we have, we're actually reconstructing the building back to its original historic configuration. The footprint is only slightly enlarged. The use is, the Stickley Museum currently has administrative offices in the upper levels. Currently, the lower level, that level that is historic, was not destroyed by the fire, has continued to be used as storage and garage. That space actually will change use and will be used as an education center for the museum. I'd like Vonda to take a few minutes and talk a little bit about, about the Stickley Museum and this building.
Okay. So I, I'll just say a couple of words about how this building came about, and do you need a?
You can be seated if you would like, just to make sure that you're.
To pick up by the mic?
Take the mic with you.
You know me, I'm not shy. I'll, I'll sit, I'll sit so I can make sure I'm being heard. So the, I think the thing to start with is to say that, well, first of all, thanks for having us here, because I love talking about Craftsman Farms and happy to do it anytime, and the plans that we have for the future. We are a self-funded organization, and so we are always looking for ways to maximize our income potential. So our annual budget is $500,000, and one of our goals for the future is to become more financially stable. And we have been running educational programs throughout. I should also say, we turned 30 this month. Our organization turns 30 in January of this month. I mean, this month, we were formed in 1989. So we've been running regular educational programs for Girl Scouts, for adults, since 2008. And that entire time, since we opened our education, our current education room, the demand has been greater than we can accommodate. So as we've been growing, we were looking for a space that could accommodate, and we can now hold about 30 Girl Scouts. We would like to have more, like 50 or 60 in a program. And so the building project really began with looking for, first of all, ways to accommodate the demand we already have. And secondly, when you are at a historic site like ours, you want people to not think that they can come one time and see it. They need to come back for other programs and other things that we can do, so we need to engage people in different ways on the property. So exhibitions, different programs, hosting, a beer tasting, something like that would be a good way to bring people in. And right now, we can't really accommodate something like that in our current space. If you've been in our education room, you know, with, with adults in the room and tables, about 30 is the max that we can really accommodate. So the building started with looking for space to bring in more people, engage with more people. We're a polling location currently. If you vote in this, this site, you know that we're just barely big enough to host this, the voting in our area. So the ground level of this garage was utilitarian space. It's kind of perfect to be able to accommodate the current need and to be able to grow and expand. We've also maxed out our staff space, and we need to be able to bring in more staff, but we need to provide an adequate workspace, so that's what we're looking to do. And we also have maxed out our storage space, so we're collecting facility. We have nine buildings at Craftsman Farms, but if you collect anything, you know that you can't really just put collections in a space that's kind of like putting in a garage, so you have to be able to manage it, to keep mold out and to keep leaks out and things like that. So we are looking forward to having more storage space, and we were able to accommodate all of those things with this one building. So that was how the building started, and it literally grew from the ground up there. We started with what was there originally, and then as we began to look at our needs and match up our strategies for the future against what the building could do, it was a really good fit, and it's a good time at our 30th anniversary, be doing a big project. Exciting.
Here's a site plan of the overall Craftsman site. Manor Drive is here. You enter the Craftsman Farm site down this driveway. Our building.
No, it's all right.
Oh.
And you're going to need to have a microphone with you.
Can I?
Yeah, sure.
Just take that right out of the holder.
So our, the administration building is right here. If you've been there, you know that the driveway continues past that, down to the log house, which is the main event at the Stickley Museum. So this building not only houses the administration building and in the future, oh, the education building, but it's really the gateway building to the entire historic complex, which is, why, using this photograph, which is circa 1912. Is that correct?
It's older, it's from the 20s. There's no, there's no Stickley era photos. This is from the 20s.
Oh, this is from the 20s, but, but it's still showing the building that, the configuration that it was in.
Yeah.
In Stickley's, Stickley's period. So as historic architects, we had this to work with, which was terrific. You know, it's, it's actually a, there's, I'll pass this along. You can see there's actually quite a bit of detail in the drawing, in the photograph, and we were able to use that in the reconstruction of the upper levels. the red portion is the existing portion of the building. This green portion is the added dormer that you can see in that photograph that sticks out, sort of a port-cochere. It's a second floor, second story space, and underneath is open, because it was a, it was a functional garage building originally. And in fact, we're, we're putting it back that way. It'll be an entrance porch now, but it's still going to be open, under there. And this blue portion that you see right there is the one place where we're actually expanding the footprint. That's a handicap ramp, and since we're building a ramp anyway, we're using that space to tuck some storage in underneath for tables and chairs and things like that. The place where we're building out this new dormer is over where there's already an existing concrete pad that's still remaining from the time when there was, was other construction there. So to the, sorry, my, uh, room, overall, some space. So this is the, the main level where Vonda's offices are currently. How many people do you have on that floor?
Seven.
Seven people. And in the, in the new construction, that floor then will be built historically accurate to that, to that photograph with new casement windows. We really, in order, at the time of the fire, everything burned down to the, down to the stone foundation walls, so we're, we're keeping the first floor floor plate, which is the ceiling of the, of the garage, ceiling of the basement, and building all new wood construction above that. So that, as far as the building department is concerned, it is a new building, so it has to comply with current code, but it's all designed to look historically as accurately as possible to that photograph. So visitors now visiting the museum will park over where Kurt is standing, enter this way, come in here, open porch underneath that dormer, and then enter here, and then a big open area in the middle of the space, more like the original construction. The building that Vonda's using now was built as a residential building with two apartments. It's, and it's still in the configuration of two apartments, kitchens, living rooms, bedrooms, a bunch of small spaces and little hallways. This will actually take it more back to what it looked like originally, historically, in a big open space in the middle. An office, conference room, bathroom, kitchen, stair tucked in the corner, and then on the, and then a staircase going up to the level above, where because of the historic configuration, we're actually able to gain a little bit of space and have space at the, at a second level underneath, underneath the gable roof. To go back to the basement level. So this is the, the current garage door on the downhill side. You know, when you, when you, when you enter the site, you're walking from your car, you're walking down this way, and right now, you walk past this to get to the log house, which is over here. A new entrance way, right in the middle where the garage door is now, to enter into one single very large room with mechanical and stuff like that sort of packed against the back. There will also be handicap bathrooms, pantry, kitchen, and then this over here is the storage that's tucked in underneath that ramp. But the idea really is to have a big open room. There's a dividing wall that comes across, you know, like one of those, to divide, sort of two things, one third, depending on what kind of functions are going on, to separate this out as a boardroom, when need be. But the idea really is just to restore these windows, the stone walls down here are all existing, they're historic, and to make this as simple a single large open space to be as flexible and usable for the education program as possible. And to take a look at the elevations. This is an elevation of the driveway side where, you know, right now, the existing building is here. The stone foundation is existing and historic. Those windows will be restored. They're still there, they didn't get burned. Everything from here up is built new, based on that historic photograph. The roof is steep enough that we can get some space in under there. And then there's that sort of funky-looking dormer, which is not something that we ever would have designed. That way, if someone asked us to design a dormer, but that's what was there historically, and we're putting it back absolutely as accurately as we can. In, in Stickley's era, this was open, sort of as a port-cochere to drive a truck or a wagon through there, and that will remain open, but it'll be sort of an open porch. That's the entry to the building. On the downhill side, there's the new entry that's replacing the garage door, and we'll have a small roof built, so, but when you vote then, that's where we're going, through that door into that, into that big open room. And then, and then all the rest of this is built, again, based on historic information with a series of casement windows that let a lot of light into that space. The other side, elevation, no surprises there. New, new door, though, for a second fire state, we got the code requirement. And the uphill side, coming from the parking lot, then, you know, the, the building itself rebuilt historically with the, with the dormer, and then there was an porch underneath. I think that that sort of generally covers what we're doing. I talked about the use, and I think that, Vonda, anything, anything else you want to add?
I did, I did not think to, to mention the, the, I was thinking more programmatic, but the entrance to the property will, will vastly improve from this, and it will give us a real way for, when people are, wayfinding is difficult on the property, so being able to know where you are and where you're going, the porch will definitely attract people to it, so that people can see where to go to. And when we do this, we'll be able to move our current shop into our, our current, our shop into our current program space, and so there's a domino effect, and then we'll be able to restore the log house kitchen, which is something that's another way for us to attract people to the site, because people love to see historic bathrooms and kitchens. It's just a thing. So it'll be another way for us to get people back to the property. So there's a nice domino effect that will come with this and will help us to, to be able to draw more people to it. And I, the other thing I did not mention is that we're aware that as we grow, that there is a need in Parsippany for meeting space in, around where we're located. The library is near us and maxed out most of the time, as I understand it, and one of the, one of the things that historic sites like this are often sort of pressured to be a place where you host wedding receptions, that kind of thing, and build a band shell and do that. One of the reasons why we, we want to steer towards what we can do well, which is have a meeting space. We can host about 20 or 30 people for a meeting. We do have a large space that is beautiful, that's outdoors, but I think it would be frustrating for our neighbors to have noisy parties nearby, but it is a way a lot of sites like ours aren't in come. So this is sort of steering us to something that we know could make us a resource and again, bring more people onto the property, and think of doing things on the property, which is the reason why Parsippany invests in it. So, so there, it, it fulfills a variety of needs that I think that we can accommodate and that we're ready for, which is exciting.
Any questions?
At this time, you're not planning any changes to parking, walkways, driveways, lighting, exterior lighting, any of that?
So Vonda and I talked today, and she's like, you know, what questions will they ask?
He did anticipate that question. Yeah, well, we just installed exterior lighting on the property for the first time and, and since Stickley's time, and we weren't able to fully complete our lighting plan, but it's vastly improved. We need, still need more parking lot lighting, but we need to raise more money to be able to do it. So when we have voting, we bring in R and R lighting. But again, to do a lot more lighting, I think it might be frustrating for our neighbors. Right now, the lights go out at midnight if they're on, so there's, that's kind of a, we're always weighing that out so that we can not be a nuisance.
And there is no change planned for parking?
Okay.
There's one ADA lawn spot on the uphill side. Per code, close to the building, there's a single ADA.
And if I understood correctly, the access to the second floor is via ramp, the second floor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Did you want me to go through?
Yeah.
Okay. This is very, this is very brief, because this is a courtesy review, and I think as, as the board members know, your, your primary role here is to look at master plan consistency. So we, we identified what we thought were the relevant goals and objectives of your[1745.33]
So we, we identified what we thought were the relevant goals and objectives of your 2014 reexamination report. And there's a few general ones. There's, you know, about light, air and open space, appropriate use and development of the land, the visual environment, and conservation of historic sites and districts, all of which we thought were relevant and all of which we thought were advanced by this application, this proposal. And then there's two more specific goals. The first deals with protection of environmental features. There are some wetlands on the site, but as we understand the proposal, there is no impact whatsoever to those wetlands. The proposal will, you know, basically maintain the natural environment of the property. The next goal is dealing with aesthetic character. And I think, as you just heard from the architect, there, there really is every effort being made to maintain and actually improve the historic character of, of the Stickley Craftsman Farm Museum and the whole site. So our, our bottom line was that this, this is consistent with your master plan reexamination, with all the goals that we found were relevant. And the only, only suggestion we had, which is just a suggestion of that, is that it looked like there'll be two trees lost with the expansion, and we were just hopeful that you could find somewhere else on the site to perhaps replace those. And I'm sure that the forestry department could give you some advice on, you know, location, species, if, if there's adequate room.
Yeah, most of the, almost everything now is secondary growth. There's one tree that remains from the Stickley era. But we're definitely sensitive to that, because it's also creates, again, a barrier between us and the neighbors. So, and I think as we grow, that more people will want that as well.
So that's all we had.
Okay. Any comments from any other board members?
What are the conditions of the driveways and the walkways?
Of the driveway is a paved driveway.
Okay.
And it's located in the, it's where the original one is.
And it's in good condition?
And it's in good condition, and it's, and it is, it's better lit now than it's ever been. I'll say that, yeah, it's better lit than it's ever been.
Are there walkways between each of the buildings?
Oh, yes, between the buildings that are most in public use, yes. And there, and there's now an ADA accessible walkway to the current education space. So once we complete this building, we'll have two ADA accessible, two buildings that are ADA accessible, which is really advancement for our site.
You also mentioned, too, how visitors visit the site and that they're not wandering around on their own.
Well, yes.
That they're generally collecting.
Yeah, except for our neighbors who walk through the property and know the conditions of the driveway. But yes, when, when visitors come from, for tours, they are walking down on a driveway, and then as they're going, they're mostly going into the main log house building, which has a, a path and has two different access points, depending on if you, if you have a mobility issue. So that's pretty much, everything that's in current regular use has access.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of, Jerry, have you had a chance to review the engineering memo that was, it was off? Okay, there, there were just a handful of questions, and mostly it's things that weren't clear on the plans. Because it looked like the sump pump was being sent into the sewer line, and I think it's just a CAD drawing error. We had questions similar to the location of the dry well, that there would be a soil test done to make sure that it's going to be draining and not sitting full of water. So we want to make sure that that brings the property. So there was a couple items about the pipe cleanouts and the sump pump discharge of the storm drain. Pretty much, we can get you a copy of the engineering memo, and it's more than, more than likely just changes that had to be made to the plan, just to clarify. So when it goes to construction, there is no confusion. And if there's any questions, you can always just give me a call.
All right.
Any comments from any other board members?
Just a couple of comments. Number one, when you enter this property, that, first impressions are important. That's the first building you will see when you walk in. So the first impression is going to be very favorable. The lighting is far better than it ever was before. We didn't have that lighting before, for the November vote, did we?
We did.
We did?
We did, yes. We didn't get, we weren't able to complete all the parking lot lighting, but we, we, it's, it's a lot improved. And, but even still, the, the clerk wanted to bring the R and R lighting, and so we did anyway.
Yeah, the trustees, having, having that as a polling place is good, because some people now know where Craftsman Farms is, that, that did not before.
To Morris Plains, right?
I'm, I'm a trustee, and I've been yelling about the lights for years that we need, we need better lighting if we're going to be, have, have people coming in there that are not familiar with the property. And then that was, that was a good thing. The other thing, Vonda, maybe you should just mention the funding. The township, you know, with, with our historic funds has helped with this. And, and maybe you might want to mention something about that.
Sure, I'd be happy to mention that. We, so we started the process of working on this building project back in 2013, and it started with seed money from the township. And enough funds dedicated to this building project that we could do a couple of usability studies on two buildings to look at what our, what our options were, and what were the best, the best ways to maximize the potential for a couple of different buildings on the site. And then, once we had really developed this project, I came back to the council and we requested funding for the building. We received $1.75 million from the township for open space funds toward the project. And it was incredibly generous and helpful towards, towards getting the building project. The whole project we anticipate will be 2.5 to 2.8 million. And, but having that confidence and funding from the township has been hugely helpful with us to go for additional funding. So we received a grant from Morris County Historic Preservation Trust in July, and it was sufficient funding to go to start the construction project. So we anticipate that we have enough funding for the hard costs of construction, so we're still fundraising for the remainder of the building. But we have, we had sufficient funds to start, and we're continuing on. And we still need to furnish the building, obviously. So if your name's Stickley, you want to furnish it nicely, and that's our call.
The other, the other thing, I, I, maybe some of the members don't realize it, but Craftsman Farms is not just a historic site. It's, it's a landmark, it has landmark classification. You know, landmarks are not too many in New Jersey.
Only 1,100 or so in the country.
I mean, the Statue of Liberty is a landmark, that's, that's the, the class that we're in when we call this a landmark. And I think that's a significant.
It is, we're a national historic landmark, we have, just our general foot traffic, people who just drop by for a tour is around 7,000 per year, which, of course, we want to increase. But we don't, we, we, we want to keep people coming, and we want to give them reasons to return. We especially want to get our neighbors to come and visit and give them reasons to return, because that will help us to continue on for another 30 years. But we have visitors, we poll visitors, we have data from our surveys, and we know we have visitors from all over the world. And so it, and it's kind of fun to look at our data and see who visits us, because I don't give tours that often anymore, but when I do, it's normal to have people from all over the country. Not so much down the road, but a lot of people who drop by from, from all over. If people are in the New York area, a lot of times, this is something that's a destination they want to come to. It's a bucket list for a lot of people.
Stickley architecture and furniture is very popular in California. And oddly enough, New Jersey has the largest number of visitors, but California is, I believe, the second largest number of visitors come from California, where Stickley is very, very popular.
Yeah, yeah.
What percentage of visitors come from outside of the United States?
Oh, outside, I don't have that figure. It's probably less than 5%, but the, but in the, like, between our metropolitan area, New Jersey, New York, mostly New Jersey, New York, it's about 42% of our visitors, and everybody else is from outside that area. So it's, it's not quite 50/50, but it breaks down that much. And our membership is another way to fundraise, is we have, you can be a member of the museum, and our membership follows that almost exactly the same. It's almost exactly the same figures, even though many people visit who don't become members. It's just kind of a coincidence.
It's a fascinating place, one of the jewels in Parsippany, certainly.
Do you often get donations of furniture?
We do, we don't accept a lot of donations, because we can't accommodate a lot of more furniture. What you, so if you've been to the museum, you've seen the best of our collection is out. That's the best way for us to conserve it and keep an eye on it, is to see it, because we don't have a big staff. So we don't accept a lot of gifts unless it was owned by Gustav Stickley, it was in the house, or if it's just a really exceptional piece of furniture that we think in the future is important. The collections we hold are in the public trust, and so we're telling Stickley's story and, and trying to collect accordingly. We had a significant gift of very rare green ash Stickley furniture this past year, and for the first time, had to, to rent a storage unit to be able to accommodate it, because we just couldn't bring in 20 pieces of furniture. But our trustees and our collections committee felt that it was so rare that it, it really should be available for the public to view and not be in another private. It would have been, it would have been put up for auction and then dispersed. 20 pieces would have been dispersed, and so they would never have been seen altogether. And so we kind of took a leap and decided to, to do that. But in the future, we hope to accommodate it on the property, because we have nine buildings. We should be able to, that's probably the next step, is to be able to have a space where we can store collections items that aren't on view otherwise. And people love to do behind-the-scenes tours, so you want to do something that could be storage for collections, so we can use it, but also have a, people can come and do a behind-the-scenes tour and see our collection.
Cool.
Where, where will the current functions that are in that building take place while this construction happens?
Well, the idea was that the staff would move into a trailer in the parking lot. And the trailer was moved onto the parking lot, and we got our zoning permit, and we're all set, but we just, it was moved in at Thanksgiving, and JCPenney powered it on New Year's Day. So we've been, it, we've been set up temporarily in our education, our current education space. We have Girl Scouts coming this weekend, we had to cancel because we couldn't get out in time. But it's, hopefully, in about the next two weeks, we'll be able to move. And then, and then our education programs will resume as normal, and we'll, the staff will be in the trailer for a year.
Okay. Any other comments from board?
Do visitors sign in, and is there a cost to visit?
Yes, there's a cost to visits, $10 for adults and $7 for seniors. In the month, on Thursdays, in the months of July and August, it's a dollar for everybody in Parsippany. So if you live in Parsippany, you get a break in the summer to come and visit.
Hang on till August.
You know, I do have the keys, I can, I can take people in anytime. And it does, it, we do, admissions is not, we usually make more money on our shop, so admissions is a way that we earn income, but usually it's more from people shopping on site. And people don't sign in, but we do collect surveys from visitors, and we do it on a weekly basis, and we do it randomly so that we can get a pretty accurate sample. And so we know quite a bit about how people find out about us, our economic impact in the area. For instance, we know that more than, like, nearly 60% of our visitors are dining in the area, buying gas in the area, shopping in the area, that sort of thing, and doing sometimes multiple activities. So those are the, and, and we also get their zip code. So we do have that data for the past two or three years.
Probably our largest attendance day is Family Day.
Actually, voting is probably, technically speaking, but yes, yeah, definitely, Family Day is, is a big, is one of our bigger days. And so we are usually, we're kind of maxed out of our parking lot for that particular event. But there's, we like, we try to bring in around 500 to 600 people if the weather's good.
Just a clarification, currently you can handle about 30. You said you were going to 60, but then you went back to the 30 number for meeting spaces at a future date. Is that incorrect?
No, that, well, I, I was thinking about, there's a, the, the, was talking about this accordion wall. So we'll have, about a third of the building will be set up as a conference room. It'll be our main conference room when our trustees meet, and that is a meeting space that, where, I'm, I'm, what I'm planning to do is offer it to Parsip, Parsippany residents at a, a rate that'll just help us to offset the cost to clean it. And at a, and then otherwise, we would rent it out to other people who might want to use it. And that space would probably accommodate around a table, maybe 20, 25 or so. The whole space should see, I think it's, I'm looking at Eric, I think it's around 100 seated. If you, if you, if you, yeah.
The maximum occupancy of that lower RE space is 160.
Right, we're probably not going to pack it with 160. So if we, for instance, had an event ourselves and, and took down the temporary, the wall, that's the, that's the non-permanent wall, then we could have 100 people in there. But our plan is, we need a conference space ourselves, and our plan is to, most of the time, to have this third of the building set up as a conference room, which would mean it's a place that we could host meetings there and keep a schedule, and, and as long as we can keep up the cleaning part of it, then I think it's something we can do. Does that answer the question?
How many parking spaces do you have?
For the whole site, there's no, it's not blacktop, then there's no lines. So I can say that when we have Family Day, we can probably park 60 or so cars pretty comfortably, maybe. But, you know, it all depends on the first 10 people who park. So, you know, as I say, I said the next goal was storage space, the next goal is really parking, with adequate parking that's marked out so people can park.
On, on Family Day, the police are there conducting traffic, and they allow some parking across the street.
People, yeah, we're kind of on the cusp of, with that event needing auxiliary parking, but we're, yeah.
Right, yeah, but we do have space.
For the most part.
We do have space across the street that is not being used right now.
Like, for instance, we have a, we have two open houses per year, like, the day after, it's like around, it's the day after our gala weekend, we do a free open house, and we might have 150 or 200 people, but we can accommodate it, because they're coming all afternoon. So it, it's, it's, the parking lot's full, but it's rotating. It's the hardest part is we have something at a set time, and then everybody has to come at that time. That's not generally what we're doing, so it works out pretty well.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I'm just wondering, because they, you know, when you have the potential for having a conference with over 100 people, then the parking becomes critical.
Yeah.
And so I'm just trying to see where this could eventually go to, and I thank you very much for your review.
Well, you know, it is, it's, it's something that's a good problem to have. Right now, I think the demand is, is, we're, we're able to accommodate it, but it's not perfect, you know?
Well, it looks like your stewardship is bringing it to a point where it will be even better for the town of Parsippany.
I hope so.
I just wish its address was Parsippany instead of Morris Plains.
That is my pet peeve, it has been.
Can we talk to the super post office?
Every time I see an Arch and Craft magazine, and it says, "Located in Morris Plains."
It's not coming from us, I'll tell you that.
No, it's the stupid post office.
All right, so it looks like the, the only thing that we would ask you to do is check that sump pump thing. And if you can find another place to replace the trees that you'll, you'll be removing.
We can do that.
Apart from that, the board wishes you good luck.
Thank you. Come to the grand opening.
Okay, the first case, which is being heard second, is RD Realty, application 18, call in 523 for amended preliminary and final site plan approval and conditional use.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Hoff at a law firm, Bizger Hoff, here on behalf of the applicant, RD Realty LLC. As the chairman indicated, we're here tonight for an amended preliminary and final site plan review and conditional use approval in connection with the Waterview Marketplace. The board will recall, I was here in November trying to get this approved without a site plan application, and I was sent on my way, appropriately so, and now I'm back.
Apologies.
No, no apologies necessary. So we went ahead, I put the engineer to work, and we have a full-fledged site plan application here for what amounts to, really, in our view, a relatively minor change. As the board might.
Before you go any further, I'd like to ask our planner if she could just get the rest of the board, we have a lot of new members on the board that were not here for the original application.
Sure.
Just to bring them up to speed on how we get to tonight.
No problem.
I'm, I'm just to be very brief, because this actually predates me as well. But I think several members know, probably all of you have seen, it's under construction right over here, there. Back in 2016, the applicant received approval to construct about 150,000 square foot shopping center, which is currently under construction, Waterview Marketplace. That had been the culmination of a couple of years of litigation. And, and so as part of that litigation, there was a settlement agreement that was reached between the applicant and the township, and, and that made some adjustments to the square footage. It signed off on a, on a various, you know, various insundary things. A couple of elements of that were that restaurants would be allowed as a conditional use for this property. And the condition primarily related to parking, whether there was insufficient parking. So that's, that's kind of the planning board's sort of role here, is to look at parking. Most recently, back in early December, there was an amendment to the settlement agreement, which further adjusted the square footages, because now... which further adjusted the square footages because now the applicant is getting tenants. And so just finalizing the actual individual sizes of the spaces. And, and as I understand, the amended settlement agreement in the future, if there are changes, you will not have to come back to this board for parking. It would be done administratively by the township engineer. But that process, you know, had already started, so you're here now for a full site plan review and, and I'll let the attorney go through the proposal. But the basic change here is previously, it was a drive-through bank that was approved on the pad site, which you could see out in the parking lot. And now that will be changed to, or it's proposed to be changed to a Shake Shack, fast casual restaurant, slightly smaller in terms of square footage, no drive-through, a little bit different landscaping, which the applicant will go through, but that's the primary change. Otherwise, all of the other approvals which are in place are, as I understand it, unchanged.
That is correct. The only thing that we're here for tonight is the little building in the middle there. And as you've just heard, it is a, changing a bank, which was originally approved at a time where we thought it might be a bank, but again, it was at the outset. And now we have a firm lease from a very anxious tenant looking to get in there to construct the Shake Shack. So that took all of my background away from me. There's no need for me to now repeat it. So with that, I'll just, if I could get our engineer sworn.
We pay her the big bucks to do this.
I'm happy when people do my work for me.
Yeah. Back to Ms. Vavate for completeness review.
I'll run through this. I mean, there is a background here, there's, there's a lot that's been submitted and approved in the past. So for just this application, the applicant had requested some waivers. There was only one item that wasn't required, that wasn't provided, that is required at the time of the application, and that's the permission in a property that has been provided. And I think you all have a copy of it tonight. Waiver was requested on protective covenants and deed restrictions. We felt the applicant could just address that through testimony. The, the application indicated that site photographs were provided. Those weren't provided in the package that we saw, so I think that could also be addressed in testimony. There was a waiver requested on details on signage. We were hopeful that the applicant could address signage, the signage plan, as well as lighting, as part of the testimony, given that you're here. I know that the zoning department likes to see sort of a complete package. If you're before the planning board, it'd be nice to see the signage as well. I think storm drainage engineer is reviewed and further testimony will be provided. There was a brief description of the usage of the buildings, which really only pertained to the supermarket, but we felt that the testimony could address that as well. Traffic study, really just to the extent, if any, that Shake Shack versus a bank changes traffic flows and circulation. Our sense was it would not change generation, but again, testimony could speak to that. And then there was a waiver requested on, on final major site plan. We concurd with that. This could be done together as one application. And that's it. So we, we determined it complete for the purposes of tonight's meeting.
So we don't need any waivers if they address all this in testimony?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to you.
Sure. I'm going to start with Mr. Chirag Chiar, our engineer on the project. Get him sworn and qualified.
Raise your right hand, please. State, I'm sorry. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's Chirag Chiar, C-H-I-R-A-G, first name, last name, T-H-A-K-K-A-R, with RNA Engineering, 1456, fair year old, goes down Pennsylvania.
I'm sorry, would you spell your first name for me again, please?
C-H-I-R-A-G.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Chiar, for the board, can you give your professional and educational background, please?
I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in civil engineering. I have a professional engineer license in the state of New Jersey since 2003 and is in good standing. I've testified before this board and numerous other townships in New Jersey.
Anyone have any questions on his qualifications? We'll check.
Okay. Chirag, you heard the summary of what's being proposed tonight with the application, but if you could, with the benefit of the site plan exhibit, would...
If you're going to go over there, you can take a mic with you.
This exhibit was part of the package.
That's correct.
I'll look in, let me see the microphone. Sometimes when they take it out, it goes.
That's all right, I could use your microphone with the...
It should be on.
As Rick had just briefed, what we are here for is a simple change in terms of the, the building that is located as you come into the main entrance drive. This, the main entrance drive being the Waterview Boulevard and the side access, which is going to be signalized. The driveway comes up, which is the first building to the right as you approach the site. Before, during the last amended site plan approval, this was a bank, 3,550 square feet with three drive-through lanes, two drive-through lanes and a bypass, or a total of three lanes. Essentially the same parking configuration. The building, the proposed building fits within the boundary of this curb. As I'm pointing my finger to it, the perimeter curb around it. So the drive aisle on the north side, south side, east and west, really did not change. The circulation still remains the same. In fact, this parking spaces are essentially the same. The front parking field between the Shake Shack building and the adjacent retail space did not change. So a large part of the plan is, is essentially the same. There's really no change in, in the layout. What, what we are here for is a 3,120 square foot Shake Shack with an outdoor seating area. The plan complies in terms of the zoning ordinance and we are not requesting any waivers, so it complies from an engineering standard. From an impervious change or, or an alteration, the plan is materially the same. We still have 77% impervious, so therefore there is really no impact to the drainage. The storm pipe network, like I said, because the, the perimeter curb did not have to change in any material way, the previously approved inlets, the drainage calculations, everything else associated with that, did not have to be updated. Same goes with lighting. The, the buildings, the bank building previously did not have any wall-mounted packs, so they were all pole-mounted light poles. Again, as a result of a, as a de minimis change to the site layout, the lighting plan didn't get impacted. So as you could see, that the underlying base stayed the same, therefore every other element of the engineering design stayed the same.
So there's no, no wall packs on this Shake Shack building?
Correct. Not, not on this plan that we are proposing. Now, if Shake Shack has an outdoor seating and they would like to light it or have it lit slightly better, then it would just enhance the lighting that's already there. Like I said, so the, the only change there is in terms of a parking reconfiguration is that we have, previously we had 679 parking spaces, we have 684 parking spaces, which complies with the code. I believe Susan had a comment in her review letter regarding the parking, that we had slightly more parking that one than what we need. Her and I had a conversation this afternoon or this morning and we were of the opinion that we'd like to keep what we have because the overall parking count for the shopping center is 684 spaces. If we have five or six extra spaces, that's about only 1% of an overall parking count, given that all the tenants are yet to be signed off for all of the buildings. And the way the parking ordinance, or the zoning ordinance reads that requires parking is based on patron area for restaurant uses, which is then tied into the architectural layout of the internal space of the building. So we'd like to hold a little bit more flexibility that we have in terms of four or five spaces. So her and I had the conversation and we'd like to have that, if we could, hold on to those spaces, because I think that it would be sin for us to give them up and then come back again for a variance, for a parking, if, if the tenant changes.
So, so we did talk about a compromise.
Yes, I'm, I'm coming to it.
If you want to get into that now.
Yep. So her and I talked, so Susan was the opinion that we lose the two parking spaces to the east end of the island. So as I'm pointing to it, there are two parking spaces. And her opinion was that since these two spaces are, have a short throat and they back up into a drive aisle, that we give up those two spaces because we still have more than what we need. And the way we discussed the compromise was that we would land bank it, meaning if we need it, then we have it, but if we don't need it, then it could convert back into a grass space. So, and I believe that, you were okay with that?
Yeah, and, and I discussed it with Mr. Carlson earlier today and, and because of the terms of the settlement agreement that you have with the township, our feeling was that if, if in the future you needed those two spaces, you would not have to come back to the planning board because under the terms of the settlement agreement, basically it's just administratively reviewed by the township engineer. So I think we, we both felt comfortable with that. Honestly, my sense is you won't need them. My hope is you won't need them and that can really accentuate that landscape area next to Shake Shack, which is the outdoor seating area. So that, that was kind of what was driving that sort of compromise. But I think both sides felt comfortable with that.
Okay.
If the board concurs.
Just to be clear, the land banking is that you leave it and you, you come back to make it a parking space. The way you described it, you described it the other way around, like it was going to be a parking space and you would...
That's how Susan and I talked, but I think your voicemail to me said that we were going to land bank it, which means basically it's green now.
It's green now.
And should we need it, we can convert it. Which is fine, either raise is okay with us.
It would only not be green if it were needed.
Correct.
As parking.
And if I may, what I'll do is I'll write into the resolution as requiring, they can be freed up and turned into parking space with the approval of the township engineer and I'll say, or the planning board. So that in the event you don't get satisfaction with the township engineer, you are still free to come to the planning board with that request.
Yeah, I think that's all right. So I think, I mean, that's really my summary of, of, of my, of the description of what we are here for. I believe, Mr. Hall, when I had a conversation on the phone, I have not seen your memo yet, but I, I believe that hopefully...
Basically, it's what we discussed on the phone. And if you could provide us with more information about the trash area, it's how it's going to be used, how it's going to be accessed, and also if the, access for the circulation for the garbage trucks.
Yeah. That's, that's, that should be all right. That, that's fine. We could, we could provide that, that's not a problem.
So looking for a circulation plan, just to prove they can fit, and also the material.
So, so Susan and I did speak because I brought it up and I said that you specifically asked me to bring it to Susan's attention, that, so the trash enclosure is going to be board-on-board fenced, which is how it was previously approved, which is how all the trash enclosures are throughout the property. And I believe that Susan didn't have any issues with them. It's not in the review letter, so it should be.
The, the construction detail will be added to the plans?
Yes, of course, yes.
And the, the gates, you have to make sure the gates are never left open because I see the traffic circulation area.
Yes.
Would be impacted by the gates if they were to be left open.
Certainly.
So the, the gates themselves, like, are they board-on-board also?
Yes.
It's a necessary, it's a, it's a trash enclosure area that was not a part of the original plan, so it looks like it's just a necessary function for this.
For the restaurant.
Thanks, didn't need one. Right.
Pickup would be arranged during off-peak hours?
Of trash?
Correct.
Trash?
Trash collection off-peak hour.
You want to, want to avoid traffic conflicts as much as you can.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, just if I may, there, we had a couple other comments. We were asking for some details on the landscaped outdoor dining area, location of tables, the paving treatments. That could be a construction detail that, that we review. And then there were a few items that were part of the amended settlement agreement that was, that was made with the township council, that we wanted just to confirm that, to the extent that they're relevant, I'm not sure that all three are relevant to this, but certainly the first one, which deals with odor and a specialized exhaust system, just confirm that everything's consistent.
Yes, that is to be installed in accordance with the amended settlement agreement.
Okay. And then if there are any other, if there are additional plantings and then there's some fencing, I don't know that that's specifically relevant to the Shake Shack, but overall, it's part of the site plan.
Yeah, obviously no problem with the condition that represents we're bound by the terms of the revised settlement, which we're fully aware of. Yep.
Hall, do you have any further?
No.
You're good. The, this outdoor dining area, is it immediately adjacent to parking?
Yes. I'm going to try to trace this with a pen. So the outdoor dining area is right here, to the east side of the building.
Okay.
And the parking spaces are, I'm sorry, I interrupted. The parking spaces are, are along where I'm tracing with my hand. Parking space is here, there's a sidewalk connection that brings you up here, and there are parking spaces all around.
What, what I'm getting to is there some way for you to barricade, block that outside dining area from vehicles being able to drive into it? I would, would hate for, you know, three or four families to be sitting there in a car, get a gas pedal stuck and end up in the dining area. Planters, bollards, something.
We could do bollards.
Or heavy concrete planters if you're landscaping there too. I mean, something that...
That would be pretty...
Something that would keep cars from being able to go into that.
Yeah, I, I think that we can work out, we can, we can sketch up a detail and we'll work with Susan and get that established, yeah.
So you, you can agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. Something that we'll be looking at in our, our master plan review is, we currently have ordinances, parking place for every three seats, right? We ran into an issue with that and I, I'm not familiar with Shake Shack, I've heard of it, it's a big name, but I don't know anything about it. Never been in one, never seen one. We had a local restaurant that opened up, it's primarily a sports bar. Well, one space for every three seats doesn't work because people tend to come alone after work. What kind of a place is Shake Shack? Is this a family, take the kids like a, I hate to say the word McDonald's or Burger King, or is it...
Bob?
Describe it.
I've been to Shake Shack in Livingston, right off the Livingston Circle. And I would say that I don't, I didn't see too many singles. Twos and threes, and then the four and the five would be, seem to be the rule.
So it's not the kind of place where people would go to?
It's not a sports bar.
Yeah. It's not a sports bar.
I would say it's pretty similar to how the burger...
Well, it does have a liquor license, or you're assuming that, correct? You're assuming a liquor license?
No, no, I wasn't.
Because there's, they're showing beer storage.
It is, does it serve alcohol? I'm, I'm, sorry, I didn't...
I didn't hear that.
I did, I didn't hear what you said. If you're, if you're going to comment, you have to come up and be sworn. Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Patricia Segedin, P-A-T-R-I.
A little louder, please, I'm sorry.
P-A-T-R-I-C-I-A, Segedin, S-E-G-E-D-I-N.
Thank you.
And your position with this application?
I work as a project consultant for Shake Shack.
And you heard the question regarding the liquor offering?
Yes. Typically, Shake Shack will have the opportunity to purchase a liquor license if it's available to them. So their typical menu will show beer, their facility will be planned for that storage if, and that opportunity comes to their, to be. And that's why you see it on the plan.
It's not, it's not designed to have a bar or something like that. It's designed so that if somebody comes in and wants to have a hamburger, they can have a beer with that hamburger.
Exactly.
That's what I saw in London, so.
Does the one in Livingston have a liquor license?
I do not believe so, by memory. It may, but I haven't been with my grandchildren and I didn't order a beer with it, so.
There's not a lot of liquor licenses.
I just have to go down there tomorrow.
They're few and far between.
What, the liquor licenses? Well, they're expensive.
They're not available.
But they're always available for price.
Thank you. Is, is the adjacent parking, the general shopping area parking, close enough to Shake Shack that if the Shake Shack parking was full, that people could walk?
Yes. So as I was just explaining, the, the building sits right there. There are about 42 parking spaces as I'm tracing over. And then there is about 105 parking spaces in this parking field. So there is more than sufficient parking for Shake Shack for a spillover.
Yeah, they're covered because it's not actually based on seats.
The, the chairman was just asking me a question about the, the parking and the fact that you, you are consistent with it, because there's a couple ways that, that you can meet the parking requirement for a restaurant. There's patron space and then there's seats. requirement for a restaurant, there's patron space, and then there's seats, and you basically have to take the higher. So, you're using the higher standard, and either way, you're covered.
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Any, anyone else have any questions?
Just a quick question, I see it looks like you have some parking spaces that are backing up onto what appears to be the main drive of the parking lot, does that create a problem for anybody else? I'm just concerned at backing up into a...
Was there curving there?
Well, it's actually no different than these parking spaces.
You're right.
So, it's still an internal drive aisle, it's just no different than these parking spaces, meaning, I don't, this is, it's not, it's not a main drive aisle that has no uninterrupted curb.
Okay.
So, it's appropriate for that area, because if these spaces were backing up, then I would be concerned, because this is a main throat that comes in, but these are secondary drive aisles, from a shopping center planning point of view, so...
All right, thank you for that.
Do you separate the parking area from the main drive aisle with curving, or something?
Yes, so these, the main drive aisle that comes in, which really brings the traffic in, and then the traffic disperses, those parking, those drive aisles have curving around it, so to channelize the traffic.
Okay. The McDonald's further east from here, not the one right across the street, but further east, delineates their parking area from the main drive aisle with landscaping and curving. I just wanted to make sure that you would be doing that, that it's distinctive, the drive aisle's distinctive from parking.
Yes, that is correct. So, there is a sidewalk that comes up, which follows the main driveway access into the site, and which leads you all the way to the front sidewalk of these retail spaces, and these islands are landscaped islands, so there is a sidewalk and a landscaped island.
Okay, that's a similar situation, it's a McDonald's in the parking lot of a shopping center, and it's, like I said, it's delineated, that, okay, now you're in McDonald's, you're not in the shopping center. Okay. Any other questions from board members? Michael?
Mr. Chairman. Sir, will there be any signage on the building itself, so that when people are driving in, they'll see what that restaurant is?
Yes, there is signage that we've received from the tenant, that will be submitted to the zoning office for review, it conforms with the ordinance, so it's a small sign, it's pretty indiscreet, but it'll definitely be delineated, so you'll know it's a Shake Shack.
Sure, thank you.
Was there a menu sign? That was my only concern, I'm also the zoning officer, and we haven't reviewed the signage yet, so that was my only concern, is the ordinance addresses like freestanding and wall signs, but very rarely does it, does it address any kind of menu boards, so...
There's no drive-through.
There's not, but I mean, like, you know how sometimes you walk up to restaurants, and they have now, where they have something outside that shows, zoning doesn't, isn't just about the freestanding and the wall sign, but there are also about any signage that's in your windows. So, the new thing now in a lot of the restaurants that we're seeing is they're putting signage in their windows. My code enforcement officer is very, very strict, and it's a maximum 25 percent in the windows, so, and this year, we are going to be enforcing signage in all the windows of precipice. So, I'd hate for you to have something that is, I've never been to Shake Shack, so if there is something that is, that is specific to you, that is not a, on your freestanding, and is not one of your wall signs, now is the time to discuss it, because I don't want you to come back to zoning, and we're not able to issue those permits, because that's a big thing now, the restaurants that you're advertising, you know, your special burger for the week, and it's in the windows, and it's larger than the 25 percent, so if you have anything that's specific to them, now's the time to add that, because I can only give you what the ordinance permits, which is usually one or two small wall signs.
I appreciate, we appreciate that feedback, I'm working from the presumption that the signage package conforms, it's been reviewed, the code, and obviously, I know I risked a potential trip back if it's not, so, I do love coming up, though.
We're friendly.
Yes, absolutely, we'll take a look at that to make sure, but we do understand, with that interpretation, we may be looking at a more stringent approach than perhaps a first reading of the code might suggest, but we'll go back and we'll look at that, but we understand it to be conforming.
Jennifer, if I understand the way that it's written, that if somebody were to put, say, a slightly larger version of a normal menu in the window, it's not going to come anywhere near the 25 percent of the window.
What's happening now in a lot of the restaurants is they're, when you're walking in, they have their menu, but then they're also putting like their special burger picture, and it's a picture that's visible from not when you're walking, to the restaurant, when you're driving by, and they're large, and they fill the window, so...
I've never seen a Shake Shack do anything like that.
McDonald's and Burger King, I've never been to a Shake Shack, but McDonald's and Burger King, it's become the new thing in the last two years, and they have them in their windows, and we just started cracking down on that. So, if there was something that you think that you're going to advertise and change that's in the windows, that's other than that, anything on, even on the door, if you're walking in and you're putting your hours, Susan's working with zoning to change those ordinances, but right now, the ordinance is silent on all of those things, so I don't want to have to be the bearer of bad news in weeks or a month from now.
Just so I'm clear on that part, though, hours of operation, you walk in, says whatever, 11:01.
As long as it's not over 25 percent of the window.
That counts, though, towards the calculation of signage.
That counts towards, yeah, so every little bit counts, and if it's all windows, we're, I mean, we're working to change that, but it might not happen in time for when you're building, and, you know, I know my zoning and construction departments are working quickly to try to get, you know, all your permits in, so we don't want to hold up for signage and waiting for the ordinance, so I just wanted to put that out there in case there was anything we were missing.
Several years ago, when Commerce Bank opened up the street, the door handles were red C, counted toward the outdoor sign calculation, so. Mr. DePiero, you had a question?
Yeah, the last time I got involved with this project, the Waterview landlords on the commercial properties were objecting to the traffic light, and I raised the question of, is that a public road, or is that a private road? Who are they to object? But I never got an answer to that. How was the traffic light issue resolved, or has it been?
Yes, I could answer. Waterview Boulevard is a township road, and the traffic signal has been approved by the township as part of the last site plan amendment, and it has all, we've also secured a DOT permit for modification of the Route 46 and Waterview Boulevard intersection, and DOT also happens to do a cursory review when those signals are close to their signal, and their signal being the Waterview Boulevard and 46 signal, so it's been reviewed and vetted.
Okay, thank you.
Going to put a left turn arrow on a, I tell you, if you're on Waterview and want to turn left onto 46, during rush hour in the morning especially, you can sit for a long time, because traffic coming around the jug handle, coming across 46 onto Waterview, you can wait a long time.
Because they're heading through, either get to Waterview, or they get to 287, because Waterview is a good shortcut to 287 South.
Yes, it is.
So, I am not a traffic engineer, so I don't know distinctly, I don't know if there's a green arrow or not, but it's been approved by DOT, so I'm sure the folks there have done their...
There are other people in the room that could have heard the question, hopefully. All right, any other questions for this witness from the board? Okay, proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have anything else affirmatively, I have Mr. Lee Klein here. We prepared a traffic anal, not a traffic analysis, a parking analysis as required by the ordinance, but we've already touched on the parking, and Susan's already done all the calculations, so I think that would really just be repetitive. It is, it's relatively simple application, so unless there's any further questions that are more specific, I don't have anything further from an affirmative presentation standpoint.
Yeah, just to be clear for the board, as I mentioned there, you can either calculate by seats or patron space, and even when you account for the outdoor seats, in this case, the patron space still gives you a higher number, so that's why that was used, and they do meet that requirement.
I do want to add, though, I would like to just thank the board and its staff for turning this around so quickly, it is much appreciated, I know the office is working hard to get permits out, and I know I aggravated Nora by submitting the application and noticing for it without her actually knowing, so, I appreciate everyone being cooperative and helping us move this forward, it is, it is much appreciated.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
The public, they have any questions?
Yes.
One last question. You talked about the traffic being basically the same, but is it really going to be basically the same versus a bank?
Well, from the zoning's perspective, it's the same, because it's permitted, it's permitted so long as we show we have enough parking, so that's really the exercise that's to be considered, but in the overall parking analysis, the zoning itself doesn't treat the bank any differently than the restaurant.
Because comes noon or dinnertime, those are peak hours for this type of facility, which means dinnertime is rush hour.
Yeah.
It's a permitted use, though, so when it's a permitted use, the planning board's review of traffic is very circumspective, if there's any review at all, unfortunately. The governing body has basically determined that the traffic is appropriate in permitting it.
Okay, I'll open the meeting to anyone in the public that has any questions or comments on this application. Do you know one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Is there a motion?
Before I make a motion, I did not catch any unusual, and it's just straightforward, there's, is there anything?
You mean in terms of variances, or?
What, I mean, you're... Why don't you list what we need to move to approve?
Yeah, if, may I?
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, what applicant requires here is preliminary and final site plan approval, which all the board members are well familiar, at least as long as I've been with this board, and I know several members, this is our first conditional use application, so a quick two sentences on that. Most of you will recall that conditional uses are, uses that are permitted in the zone, assuming, or in the event that they meet certain conditions that that use is subject to. Here, the restaurant use is permitted, it's conditionally permitted, subject to the condition that the applicant demonstrate to the planning board that there is sufficient parking. So, you've heard testimony from both the applicant, as well as reviewed Ms. Vivate's review letter, which all indicate that parking is more than sufficient on the site, so the condition, in my view at least, appears to be, appears to be met, so I think that it's a minimal conditional use review. So, what we need is a motion for preliminary and final site plan approval, as well as conditional use approval, subject to the following conditions. There are three, in addition to our usual set of conditions, that bollards or some similar structure will be added to prevent vehicles from being able to drive into the outdoor dining area, and will make that subject to the satisfaction of the board's engineer. Two parking spaces, as identified by the board's planner, will be land-banked, and may be available to the applicant upon approval of the township engineer in the future, and failing that, they may apply to the planning board for that approval. And three, the applicant remains bound by the terms of the revised settlement agreement.
I move that.
Well done.
Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Perewick, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perewick?
Yes.
Councilman DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Ms. Vili?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
No more questions, I can hear me.
Okay, any other business that come before the board?
Our professionals have anything they want to hold us for?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Let me, well, let me again wish everyone a happy new year.
Happy new year.
And welcome back to Councilman DePiero, who's served the board many times over the past years.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mealy, you took a year off, welcome back.
Yes.
And we've got a big year ahead of us, we're going to finish the master plan, right?
Right.
Our planner is nodding her head.
Good. She's still awake.
That's the big thing before us, is you may have read in the papers, 1515 is off the table for right now, 1515 or 10, doesn't mean it won't come back, but there are some other big parcels of land that could show up before us this year, so be prepared.
Are we going to have?
We'll see you on the 28th, right?
Is the mayor's going to have another special meeting, or?
For the housing?
Well, on the master plan.
Oh, we don't have one scheduled yet, our next master plan meeting.
We're tired tonight. Are you referring to the email that came out today?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, that was about last...
Oh, is that...
Oh, I know, but...
If you saw the email, the title was Mayor's Town Hall's Return?
Yeah.
And there was a link to the master plan review that Susan's company put together that didn't work.
Oh, dear.
So, I, early in the afternoon, when I saw it, I clicked on it, and I thought, well, they'll see it and fix it. About 4:45, I called because it still wasn't working, and Joyce Garrow said she was going to talk to Jack and see if he could get it up again. But that is available online, is it available from the website?
It should be on the website, we sent it earlier in the week, or late last week.
So, the review from that big meeting we had at the Hill?
Yeah, I think it's basically the review that you've seen, but now it's publicly available.
I know.
Is there a motion?
Okay, a motion was made to adjourn, if anyone objects?
Objection.
See you on the 28th.